Well, it's one of those countless areas in where the economists you can consult disagree. A lot of advocates of higher minimum wages in the federal level think that it should be back in the neighborhood of, I think, 60% of the full-time wage. In fact, advocates of this higher wage believe that the minimum wage should be related solely to the full-time, full-year wage rather than the wage for all jobs. I would disagree. I would say wages are -- wages, and in fact, many of the jobs we're talking about, many of the workers we're talking about, in fact, it's roughly 50/50, a little more on the positive, are not full-time and maybe are not depending on and supporting a family on the wage. There's a whole mix of people in this. So, the norm is what you think it ought to be, but let me point out one thing. Professor Krueger is one of many people, I'm not going to speak for him, but he's made his viewpoint very clear, and there are others that he cited addition to him. Among those advocating a higher minimum wage in the federal level, much higher than 7.25, including those who have done the work most of the advocates in this room have cited in the past, in favor of some high multiple of a full-time wage, have also suggested, and there's not unanimity on this, some would disagree, that there is some greater ability to absorb higher wages in wealthy areas than there is in less wealthy areas. That in fact, minimum wages should, if you set minimum wages at some multiple of the median wage, say even the median full-time wage, what you'll quickly find is it's going to differ by state, for starters. Secondly, again, I don't have to tell you, New York State itself is very diverse. So by that analysis, you should also be looking at having a differing wage within New York State. And that is something that has, that no one has paid attention to. In fact, one of the surprising things about this proposal, which in its dimensions is completely unprecedented, would be this is, you have never been presented with any proposal like this before, is how it is completely oblivious to very significant differences and disparities in labor markets and wage levels across the state, which vary widely as I've cited, as the figures I've cited indicate. So, the answer to your question is, it's whatever you want it to be. There are people who try to make a case for it to be at a certain level, but even those analysts, and I could send you citations to them, who favor a higher federal minimum wage pegged at some level, acknowledge differences among states and in fact have not called for a $15 minimum wage.
No, I appreciate that. You know, I've, I know that there are well-respected, learned economists out there on various areas of the spectrum, but whether it's Professor Newmark, or Professor Krueger, or Professor Holter, all people who have frankly advocated for minimum wage increases, they've also all warned that it is the, the amount of this increase and the incremental increase as large as these are, because what I've seen, and I'd love to hear your comment on this, is we're talking about phasing this in over three years or six years if we're going to use the governor's model. If we're going to use the governor's model that he has used so far for fast food workers, that he has used so far for state workers, that he has used so far for SUNY. So I'm assuming that the governor is going to continue to be consistent. And let me take the opportunity to lament the fact that although we're here discussing the minimum wage and here discussing a concept, and although we invited the commissioner to be here today and representatives to the governor to be here today, they chose not to be here. So we will go and we will extrapolate off what he's already done in order to conceptualize the discussion here today. Because it would have been better if they had had somebody here and they could have clarified it for themselves.
Years or four years, I don't have it in front of me, culminating in then 75 cents and 75 cents or something.
Statewide.
Statewide.
New York City significantly.
Dollar a year, dollar a year, dollar a year, dollar a year. New York City different. So every year you'd have a bigger, you'd have in nominal terms, a bigger minimum wage increase than you ever had before. Now, I've heard it argued that, well, that should ease the pain upstate. I would suggest that really, you're really comparing strangulation to sort of beheading. I mean, we won't do it all at once, we'll kind of slowly squeeze. Let me use the example of the specific sector I cited, which is relatively small but which is very important to working families, childcare workers. So, you have childcare workers whose median wages now in the most populated metro areas upstate are under $10 an hour. And you're going to in stages every year increase the minimum by $1 an hour, every year for several years in a row. What do you think that does to childcare bills and costs for people paying for it each and every year that it happens? Now, that's quite aside from the point. A lot of what you've heard today is about whether people deserve a higher wage or should get a higher wage, or whether we should value work in a different way. But I'm talking about the, basically, the basic part market consideration here is, the money does not come from nowhere. You have people who earn a particular wage in a particular industry that's at a level we now know that is going to have to go up very significantly each and every year for a number of years. The fact that it's over, you know, certainly it would be a calamity if it went up 67% all at once, but it really, it's still unprecedented, even under the schedule the Wage Board has adopted, it's still unprecedented. And in fact, the chart I gave you, I think figure one or two, shows, if you just look at the scale of it, even compared to the very significant run-up in the federal minimum wage in the, during the boom, during the 50s and 60s, which was this sort of concentrated period of minimum wage increases, it's bigger than that, and a bigger, shorter, a bigger increase in a shorter time. So, I just think, I would like to add one thing to some remark you made, Senator, you were talking about the business community. I'm not here to talk for or express concern about quote-unquote "the business community", there are other people here to do that. The point in fact of what, of the research we co-sponsored, and the point I'm trying to make here today is that you ought to be concerned about individual workers and about employment opportunities in New York State. Forget about the businesses. If those are, those come through the businesses. And I'm not saying you should disregard the interests of business, but the point is, businesses will speak for themselves. I'm talking about, you ought to be thinking about workers and opportunities for workers and how counterproductive this will be for workers, especially the workers who are going to, who are supposed to be most benefiting from this.
And we'll have, we'll have representatives from the business community, we'll also have representatives from the not-for-profit community who will also be testifying later today and they can get into those particulars. But, but you know, you mentioned the earned income tax credit and the ability that we have here in New York to directly assist people who are working, as opposed to a safety net program, as opposed to other forms of public assistance, that there is a route already in place, or a program in place, that will actually put more money in people's hands. Because that's really part of this, is how do we give people the ability to support themselves and, on the other hand, weigh the impact to the job creators out there? And if there's a way of more directly putting money in people's hands as opposed to perhaps impacting or devastating certain employment sectors in this state, you mentioned earned income tax credit as a, as a means of doing that. How would we do that?
Well, I mean, there's no question that the way to most directly and efficiently concentrate more resources on low-income workers is that, without affecting hiring patterns and opportunity, is through the earned income credit. And again, you can go to his article, not to be, just cite one guy, among many, that was a, Krueger among others made that point also. Many economists, some who think there's an impact and some who think there's not, have all talked about how the earned income credit is the way to concentrate most efficiently added income to people who are in low-wage jobs. Now, that's not to say, to a surprising degree, the earned income credit has not been sufficiently examined and revisited by researchers. There's a paucity of research on how to improve the earned income credit. One big problem with it is, it's paid, the limits of the program are such that it is paid once a year. People have to go to tax prep, file their tax return, and then get a check for several thousand dollars. Then the child credits are part of that. If there was a way to somehow, there've been experiments that have been sort of 50/50, if there was a way to somehow make it, to run it regularly through somebody's paycheck, which the ACA mechanism on insurance may actually have created an opening to, perhaps New York could even pilot a program. There's one big problem here also. Our EITC, about which we've written in favor in the past, in my organization, is 30% is geared as federal, 30% of the federal level. We spend a billion dollars a year on that program. The federal EITC, thus it's based on that structure, so we'd have to change our definition, and there would be a budget outlay increase for that, although when you start hearing from nonprofit industries about how much it would cost just them to even, many of whom haven't caught up with the $9, much less 15, the figure won't look as big as you think. The federal minimum, EITC is geared generally, in a general way, to the federal minimum wage, so it doesn't actually peak, it's kind of out of joint with places with higher minimum wages now. I think a lot of interesting work could be done in figuring out how to enhance the minimum wage. The President, President Obama, has spoken about enhancing the EITC for single individual workers, which is very, there's almost nothing at the moment. And there's been a lot of thought, and again, potential bipartisan support for doing that, and also for sweetening it for married couples, who don't get any real, who don't get arguably sufficient benefit from it now. So that's kind of where the thought is. I think a lot of work can be done to examine the EITC in more detail and figure out how to make it more effective.
Of the jobs we have here in New York State, can you tell me roughly, if you know, what percentage are from small businesses, what percentage are from large businesses? To the extent that you do.
Offhand, I forgot to research that, I'm sorry. I'm sure subsequent witnesses will know it. I would, a lot of low-wage jobs obviously are with small businesses and small firms, and the general economic understanding is that profit margins and operating margins are thinnest in small businesses and the types of businesses that employ low-wage workers.
When we discuss these issues, you know, there are people who will discuss these issues and think of the large stores, the multibillion-dollar corporations, whether they're fast foods, or whether they are, you know, the Walmarts, or the Home Depots, or the Lowes, or you fill in the blank. When I discuss this issue, I think about the shop at the corner at the end of my block. And so, it contextualizes these issues for me because, you know, someone put a figure to this, and I think it actually may have been the governor, that this will put $15.6 billion into the economy.
Right.
But this isn't $15.6 billion that wasn't already in the economy. This isn't new money, this is money that is coming from somewhere else.
Right.
And to the extent that there's an argument that's going to be made that that money is coming from large retail, multibillion-dollar companies, there's a discussion. And so, I would like to focus on, and perhaps it's not with you, perhaps it'll be with somebody else, if you don't wish to comment on it, but the amount of money that comes from those small businesses, frankly, those people whose kids are going to school with my kids and who own businesses locally, is a real concern. Because they're no longer going to have the money to spend, and they were spending it. So what do we, how do we deal with that?
Well, I mean, I don't think, for instance, that the idea of somehow doing some tax trade-off and we'll make it up to them in the back end, that is, should be a non-starter because you're talking, wages are part of your gross above-the-line expense. Taxes are a sliver of your operating margin, which in the case of many of these businesses is very small. The cost of the higher minimum wage for many of these businesses will be probably hundreds of times more than any savings from any conceivable tax, in fact hundreds of times more than you pay in tax. I think that it is ironic that much of this discussion has, has taken to sort of objectifying big multinational, even global chains, such as McDonald's as the so-called, the sort of supposed evil-doers who are taking advantage of and exploiting low-wage labor, when in fact, if you implement a policy like this, like all labor regulations of all sorts, the employers that are most, best situated to deal with it, absorb it, and after, whether or not they fend it off, you know, surviving, are big employers. At the end of the day, you will end up with more retail, more service, more food service being done by and owned by chains, the bigger, the bigger the more likely, than by community businesses if you do this. There's no question about it.
So if I have a local hardware store and I have a Home Depot, and, and this goes into effect, what you're suggesting is, a year or two, three years down the road, my local, locally-owned, small-business-owned hardware store is out of business and Home Depot's still there?
Well, think about that, and there's been, there've been research on this and substantial studies about it, but just from your own experience. When a Walmart or a Home Depot comes into a community, the first thing that happens is the guy with the local hardware store freaks out because he thinks, well, that's it, they sell rakes for half of what I do. Then what happens is they realize they keep a lot of their business, they certainly keep me, because when you walk in and you're not sure what size bolt to buy, the guy you've known for years knows, walks you down the aisle and says, you take this one instead of this one, whereas somebody in Walmart doesn't know anything if you can find them. So the local business survives on the basis of the service it provides, which equates to the people it employs. The Home Depot/Walmart model is much less intensive in terms of employment, and of course is spread across a much bigger base of capital support than the local hardware store owner who maybe has the, you know, the Ace franchise. And those are the, that, to cite just that type of business, clearly, you don't need to, you know, this is, based on your own experience, you can figure out what will happen here. This makes it much harder, that much harder, on the individual, the small employer or the employer with a small, with two or three stores in a particular community than on the larger employer. Larger employers will complain, I assume, but at the end of the day, they'll deal with what they have to deal with. They are big fat, capital-intensive businesses with huge marketing budgets.
You know, I, and I'll ask, this is the last question, I know my colleagues have some questions as well. As I was reviewing the materials for the Wage Board that was convened recently, and you look at some of the statistics that existed there, and I certainly suggest that whoever's interested should go back and take a look at it, they looked at the number of employees by, by, for fast food franchises. So those franchises that had fewer than 10 employees, those that had between 10 and 20, those that had over 100, and they're, and they gave the average salaries that were paid to their employees, given the number of employees that they had. And what you'll find is that the larger ones, those that had more than 100 employees or more than 500 employees, were actually paying their workers over $15 an hour, and those that had fewer employees, they were small franchisees, the kinds that we were discussing just now, were actually on the lower end of the scale. So the larger companies have an opportunity by that, and I'll extrapolate, to be able to support the higher wage. So I appreciate that. Senator Sabino.
Thank you, Senator Martins. Thank you, EJ McMahon. I might not always agree with your findings, but I certainly have great respect for the work that your center does and the thought-provoking information that you bring forward. So I want to go to a couple of points that you made, because I've read in other articles where you've talked about the EITC, and I think you're right. I think regardless of what happens with minimum wage here in New York State, I think it's time for us to reexamine whether the EITC really is a valuable tool for working families and what we can do to prop it up. So can you expand a bit more? Are you suggesting that we shouldn't raise the wage, we should spend more time focusing on how to make the EITC a more valuable tool for working families?
Well, first of all, I think there is no question that it is a valuable tool. I think one of the things that we haven't done, certain state-focused work on, and we have an exceptionally large number of people in New York State who claim the EITC, is, are there better delivery mechanisms? Are there, how and whether we can enhance it again for single individual workers, and how you would distinguish between individual workers who are college students over the summer and, but maybe have claimed emancipation to get a loan, and individual workers who are trying to support themselves solely? There's all these sorts of questions. These are questions that have come up with the EITC in the past. I do think that, first of all, the EITC should not be overlooked, which it has been, I think, in general, is almost always overlooked in this discussion. The implication in this discussion always is that people out there are supporting families purely on the wage, without any sort, without any other cash, and there is cash, and it's not, public assistance is the wrong name for the earned income tax credit.
Oh, I agree.
Public assistance is standard welfare. Public, the earned income tax credit is earned. And the same goes for the child credit, which goes to people way up, the, most taxpayers up the income scale get the tax credit, get the child credit. So you're being treated the same as anybody else. But I do think, I think we need to look at it, I think we need to do the kind of research that you could do only if you have access to the state tax department's records, and like, and do some blind research involving a comparison both of, of people in TANF welfare-to-work programs and the EITC roles. I think there's not enough we know about how effective it is. I don't think enough recent research has been done to actually talk to families who get the EITC, to find out what the strengths and weaknesses are. And again, the focus in particular, not just on the levels, but on the delivery mechanism. Should there be a regional difference in the EITC, is another, is another issue. So, I think there's a lot of interesting questions surrounding the EITC that really we haven't asked, and that you'd need a government entity to sponsor those questions in order to get into the data at the level you need.
Right. You also brought up the issue of using the example of childcare workers, that if we were to raise the wage for, raise the minimum wage for workers everywhere, they would also be entitled to an increase in the minimum wage. But that's also a group of workers for whom the majority of their income is capped based on the subsidy that a working family has to obtain that childcare.
Right.
So a lot of them are, their, their income is, is depressed simply by government policies.
Right.
So would you think it might be a good idea for us to revisit the subsidy rate for childcare?
Well, here, I think that an honest way of approaching it, and I respect the way you've been talking about this, is because what you're implicating is, well, if we want to do this, we're going to have to spend a ton more money. I mean, basically, that's the implication of what you're saying, and the answer is yes. If you believe wholeheartedly in this, and I do think the economic consequences throughout the private sector economy, direct and ripple effects, will be more negative than you can stand. But if you were just looking at the impact on public sector budgets and confronting it honestly, as I think you're doing, is you have to recognize that there are untold hundreds of millions of dollars in costs associated with the wage levels now paid to employees of nonprofits, many of whom don't make, are just barely getting up to $9 an hour, much less 15, and that, there's been no talk of that. I think when you, that we, when you really dig into the expense of that, I think it's going to be very large, perhaps shockingly large. And remember, let's say we ignored that, even though we should, let's say you adopted this and ignored that, and you, as you point out, there's caps. Well, remember, this becomes the prevailing wage. So the, the nonprofit program is employing the person whose wage is capped, and the commercial childcare center, or the other, the childcare center that doesn't have subsidized clients, is not capped. So that person now can get a job at another place that pays, is required to pay more. That's, this is how it can disrupt labor markets. It's also why to make, I think is an important point, when you begin to hear about and get documentation of the impact on nonprofits, and I think also probably the impact on small business, I think the natural first tendency of the legislature is to say, we need carve-outs. We got to slow the schedule down, we got to carve out, we have to exclude, we have to have training wage. The problem is, if this fifth, if this minimum wage increases to have any meaning at all of the sort you ascribe to it, it's going to affect labor markets. Just because I have a carve-out doesn't mean I'm going to be in danger of losing employees or having wage pressure because of the places that don't have a carve-out. So there are those effects, and I do respect what you're doing, which is to at least try to call attention to the fact that there are tremendous costs with this, particularly to those services that are subsidized, human services that are subsidized by government.
Thank you. I have two more questions, and it'll be very quick. Even though we don't have a proposal before us, you know, we, we assume we know what we're talking about based on, you know, rallies that have been held and public comments that the governor has made, and we can look at the Wage Board and the action that they were asked to take, and I think what the governor's proposed for SUNY and some other state employees. So we think we know what we have, but we don't have a bill. But part of the discussion publicly that has been made in an effort to blunt the impact, so to speak, on businesses and small businesses, has been a suggestion that perhaps the state should provide a tax cut to small businesses. What's your opinion on that? I don't have an opinion on it.
There, I, I don't, I, whatever other reason there would be for doing a tax cut for small businesses, this is not the one. This is, this is not apples to oranges, this is like apples to, you know, mangoes or, or palm trees. I mean, this is, you're talking, again, wage costs, and it varies depending on the type of businesses, but wage costs are part of gross expense. Your, your taxes is applied to your net income. Businesses, you're talking about businesses in many cases with margins, basically, their profit or income margins of 1% to 4%, to which we then apply a 6.5% maximum tax rate, or varying, depending on the income tax. You're talking about a small percentage of a small percentage. The labor cost is the gross above-the-line expense. You can construct many models of a business, a small business, defined as in the governor's new small business tax cut, for instance, a small business with, say, 50 or 60 employees, which has average wages of, say, $50,000, $55,000, including some people who are clustered in low-wage jobs just above the minimum wage at the bottom. When you say, when you force up, apply this to that business, that business's wage costs, that business may have net income of $200,000 taxable. It has wage costs of millions of dollars, $2 or $3 million, and you're increasing the wage costs, which may be $2 or $3 million, by, let's say, on average, because they're not all minimum wage, 10% or 20%. Well, 10% or 20% of $2 or $3 million is more than your entire net income. So, it's not, there is no way this one thing relates to the other. It's not even worth thinking about. I mean, you do a minimum wage increase, and frankly, I was united with some of the people in this room who are normally, normally we disagree on minimum wage. When the, when the small minimum wage tax credit was enacted several years ago, people on both sides, we all spoke out and said, this is a bad idea, this is not, this is counterproductive, it's pointless, don't do it, it was done anyway. But I mean, I don't think you should even think about it.
And no one claimed it either, to me.
Well, I mean, well, yeah, because it was pointless, I mean, not surprised, but I mean, that's the, if, and if it had been more generous, if it had been generous enough a claim, it would have had counterproductive, unintended consequences that you wouldn't like. So, it was not, this, I wouldn't even think about it.
It's, I have one, thank you for that. I have one final question. One of the reasons why, this is very contentious, the minimum wage. I've been in the legislature now since 2005, and I think the 2004 cycle was a big fight over whether we should raise the minimum wage then to, I think, $6 an hour. And we've done it three times since then, but it's always difficult, and it's, you know, and the same arguments come forward that, you know, employers can't handle it, and it'll harm workers, it'll eliminate jobs at the low end, all of the arguments we're going to hear today, writ large, again. But here we are, trying to discuss it. So in your opinion, as an economist, economist?
I'm not an economist.
An expert at these things.
Okay.
In your opinion, since it's taken 85 years almost for the minimum wage in the United States to go from $0.25 an hour to $7.50, 85 years, right, would it be better if we took the politics out of it, if we eliminated this, and we were to raise the wage, establish a base floor that provides a living wage, that provides predictability for employers so that they know what they're facing, and then peg it to the rate of inflation?
Well, a lot of people have advocated that. There's not broad agreement on it, but a lot of people who are for a higher federal minimum wage have advocated that. I would note that none of the most serious advocates of that have talked about, have talked about going to 15 and indexing it. But, yes, that's been a serious proposal, I think. I don't think I'm misspeaking, I think even Mitt Romney supported indexing the minimum wage.
Imagine that.
But, not 15. I think that the other thing we should be conscious of, though, again, which I think is getting more sort of belated recognition from, from those economists who are writing about raising the federal minimum, is recognizing the regional differentials, because they've looked at Seattle and said, hmm, Seattle's like this bubble of wealth creation right now. It's booming. It's filled with people going out to dinner, basically, okay, allegedly. Well, Binghamton is not Seattle. You know, Elmira is not Seattle. And that, I think there's also, if you were thinking about automatic ratcheting devices, that you, not necessarily endorsing that idea, but getting at what you're getting at, if you're thinking of, let's just do it, one and done, let's just do something and ratchet it, you also ought to be thinking about regional wage norms and not simply having statewide ratcheting devices in a state as large and diverse as New York.
Well, I thought I had, that was the last one. On that point, while there are different wage rates by state, recognizing New York's more expensive than Nebraska, and the feds set the real floor, we set our own ceiling here, our own wage floor, which is whatever, has there ever been an experience where a state has more than one minimum wage within their state?
Yes. New Mexico does, for instance. They're all high, and New Mexico is a very sick puppy.
They're all high? As in?
They're all high minimum wage. Well, no, no, they're not high in that. You're thinking of other legislative battles. They are, they are, they had extremely high minimum wages. In fact, Santa Fe was, was the only place you can find in the country that in one fell swoop went quickly on a percentage basis as much higher as the feds, as this would take us about 10 years ago. The very poor, important, the, the New Mexico economy has performed very poorly. It has a variety, I think, I think much of the state has different minimum wages, highest in Santa Fe, they're all higher than the federal minimum wage, they're all pretty high by national standards, and I don't think it's come out too well.
But the, but the establishment of different wage rates within the state?
Oh, that's, that's a pattern, yes. And there are, obviously, it's happening in California now, Los Angeles is going to, on its way to 15, state of Washington with, with Seattle. It's, there are states that permit local minimum wages, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question.
Senator Marchionne, and then we'll come to you, Senator.
Of course.
Thank you, EJ, for your, for your testimony today. Certainly can see that you have some serious concerns about $15 an hour, but would you have a suggestion or an alternative or a compromise that you think would work in New York and still help people perhaps have a higher minimum wage?
Well, putting aside the fact that I, I wouldn't advocate necessarily any increase of minimum wage. in minimum wage, rather than looking at a pause, at least now, after the increases we've had, so I'm not advocating it. However, I think that actually, that we were just leading to this, I think, almost, I think Senator Savino had the better approach last year, which was the fair labor, fair local wage bill, which would allow New York City and counties in New York State to set wages. And as your own, I, I pulled out your memo of justification, because I thought it made some points that are still very valid, relevant to this debate, which was, first of all, that it would have recognized the, what you, as you put it, the wide variation in the cost of living in different parts of the state, which has not been recognized in this discussion. Secondly, you, you wouldn't have the state completely evaporate from the discussion, because you would basically peg what localities could do to some maximum percentage of what the state set, which in your bill was 30% above, which is, I think, was 1170 or something. But I think that if you have to do anything, or you want to consider doing anything, I think that that is a far better approach that allows local communities and local elected officials to recognize the dynamic, the dynamics of their own labor markets, and to weigh all of the pluses and minuses. I think that's a far better approach, it was and it is, than the approach we anticipate is going to be presented to you by the governor.
You don't feel that county by county is detrimental to the businesses that are there? That in Saratoga you'd pay, you know, a certain amount, and in Albany you'd pay a different amount?
Well, I think what we'd quickly find out is, I think the counties would quickly learn whether, what kind of difference it made. I think that they would have to think about that in setting their wages. My prediction, based on nothing but hunch, is that very few would move far out of line with many others outside of New York City. But you would have a discussion that was far more relevant to and grounded in local reality than we're having now, which frankly, with all due respect for people in this room, has been carried out largely with references to McDonald's in Midtown Manhattan. And that's not, that is not relevant to a situation with, with nearly 50% of the hourly wage earners in the southern tier.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you very much for, for the work you're doing and being here today. You mentioned Alan V. Krueger?
Yes.
And he's a former advisor to Barack Obama?
Right.
Are you implicating that Barack Obama subscribes to the points of view that you or Mr. Krueger have on this?
Wouldn't for, I'm not sure where he stands. I think he's proposed a $12 federal minimum wage, and members of his administration have been in the neighborhood of this proposal, so I'm not sure what he supports.
Okay, just wanted to be sure that...
Right. No, I'm not, I...
He's on that slippery slope.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't dare imply anything as, as being the president's position.
Okay, thank you.